Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome. I am Frank Clark, and on behalf of my fellow board members, I want to thank you all for coming today. The purpose of this hearing is compliance by the Board with the school code provisions regarding amending the 2017 budget. Madam Secretary, please state for the record the notice procedure for this hearing.
Thank you, Mr. President. Notice of this public hearing was published in the Chicago Sun-Times, a newspaper of general circulation in the city of Chicago on October 5, 2017, and posted on the CPSBOE.org and CPS.edu websites on October 5, 2017. The amended budget was posted on the CPS.edu website on October 5, 2017, in accordance with the school code. I will now read into the record the public notice as published. Notice Public Hearings FY18 amended budget for the 2017-2018 fiscal year, Chicago Board of Education, commonly known as Chicago Public Schools, to whom it may concern. Public notice is hereby given by the Chicago Board of Education that it has prepared a FY amended budget for the 2017-2018 fiscal year in tentative form, and that five copies thereof available for public inspection have been filed and are now on file in the office of the Board of Education of the City of Chicago, commonly known as Chicago Public Schools, 1 North Dearborn Street, Suite 950, Chicago, Illinois 60602, and available at www.cps.edu/budget. And that said, Board of Education will hold two public hearings upon said amended budget on the 10th day of October 2017. Chicago Public Schools Loop Office, 42 West Madison Street, Garden Level Board Room, Chicago, Illinois 60602. Hearing time, 12:00 p.m. to 1:30 p.m., and the registration from 11:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. And the second hearing, Chicago Public Schools Loop Office, 42 West Madison Street, Garden Level Board Room, Chicago, Illinois 60602. And the hearing time, 2:00 p.m. to 3:30 p.m., and the registration from 1:00 p.m. to 2:00 p.m., dated at Chicago, Illinois, October 5, 2017, Chicago Board of Education, by Frank M. Clark, President, and attest Estelle G. Beltran, Secretary. Mr. President, I would also like to note the board members who are present here today. And we have Member Furlong.
Present.
Member Rivera.
Present.
Vice President Guzman.
Present.
Member Ward.
Present.
And President Clark.
Present.
We have five members present. We have a quorum, and I would also like to recognize Forrest Claypool, our CEO, and Ronald Marmer, our General Counsel. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Prime Secretary. Let's begin with the amended budget presentation, and I believe that's going to be Michael Siskowski.
Good afternoon, President Clark. My name is Mike Siskowski. I'm here to give you an overview of the FY18 amended budget. So, on August 28, 2017, the Board approved a $5.75 billion fiscal year 18 budget. This budget included two assumptions for revenue from the state and additional local revenue. We assume there would be $300 million in new state revenue as part of this budget and 269 million in new local revenue. This amended budget does two things. It clarifies the $569 million in state and local revenue, which is partly covered by the $450 million in new state funding from Senate Bill 1947, which has since become Public Act 100465. The second thing that this amended budget does is it changes the charter school funding based on the new funding formula mandated in the new state law. The original budget included a contingency for this potential change. The increased state and local revenue puts CPS on stronger financial ground and ensures stability in the classroom in the current school year. As a part of this, district schools were held harmless for $35 million of enrollment-based funding declines during the 10th-day budget adjustments. The first piece of the changes in the amended budget is covering the $569 million in assumed revenue. We had assumed $300 million of new state revenue in the original budget, and this came through. On top of that, to cover the additional 269, we received $4 million more from the state than we had anticipated. We also increased our property tax levy for teachers' pensions by $130 million. We're planning to receive $80 million in funding from the City of Chicago for school security and student safety costs, and we are covering the remaining $55 million through debt refunding savings and purchasing savings. And this gives us a balanced budget based on the framework we initially put forth. The second change in the FY18 amended budget is for charter school funding. PA 100465 requires CPS to set charter tuition rates between 97% and 103% of the district's per capita tuition cost. This is a calculation, which is how the state views the amount of money that we spend to educate each of our students. Before this change, state law dictated that we spend 75% to 125% of PCTC, which allowed us a little bit more flexibility in setting charter tuition rates. Prior to this change, CPS used a student-based budgeting model similar to the way that we fund our district schools. So, charters received an SBB rate equivalent to the district school rate, and then on top of that, charters received a non-SBB rate, which reflected the items that the district provides in-kind for district schools, such as operations, maintenance, security, and central office services. The changes in this funding formula will increase charter school funding in FY18 by an estimated $37 million. In conclusion, the FY18 original budget was $5.749 billion. And the amended budget, which reflects the changes we discussed, is $5.699 billion. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. Questions, board members?
Yeah, I have a question. So, previously charter schools have gotten the SBB rates, which have been publicly documented in the budget book. What's the mechanism in which they're going to start receiving funding with this change? Is it going to be a modified student-based budgeting rate? Is it a lump sum? And when is that going to be public, the mechanism in which they're receiving the funding?
So, the mechanism through which they are going to be funded is included in the amended budget book. What we've done basically is take the PCTC formula that we're mandated to use by the state and use the FY16 per capita tuition cost to come up with a overall number for what, the 97% to 103% range? And then we are deducting the in-kind services that we're providing to charter schools, such as the district pension, the unfunded liability, charters that are in CPS facilities, and then the principal and interest on our long-term debt service.
Did that answer your question?
Yes.
Following up on that question, there will be, I'm sure, representatives from the various charter schools, as well as local community schools, that will ask a similar question. The formula should be readily understandable, and it's actually quite complex. So, we want to make sure that people who have to live with the budgets have a reasonable understanding of how the calculations were made.
Yeah, and those numbers and those calculations have all been provided in the updated budget book.
Just to get to the question that I know that we hear consistently on the Board is, do we feel confident that this is, given the limitations of the PCTC as the base of what we're required to use, that this is as close as we can get to equitable funding for charter schools?
Yes, we believe this is as close as we can get.
Thank you very much. Madam Secretary, let's proceed with today's public comment segment. Please share the rules for public comment.
Thank you, Mr. President. For the record, I would like to note that registration for this public hearing was held between the hours of 11:00 a.m. and 12:00 p.m. Individuals who registered to speak will have two minutes to comment, and I will call the speakers in the order of registration. This hearing will conclude after the last person who has signed in to speak has spoken or at 1:30 p.m., whichever occurs first. When called, please state your name, and I will proceed by calling the first speaker. Our first speaker, Mr. President, will be Speaker Number One, Mark Majid, followed by Speaker Number Two, Rosa Nodal, and then Speaker Number Three, Maria Savala.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Mark. I'm an activist, a trader, and the husband of a CPS teacher. She teaches at Suter Montessori over on Damon, Washington, runs the best inclusion classroom in the damn city. So, I'm here to argue against this fair funding nonsense, but I want to make it clear that the charter schools are not the enemy here. There is a solution that has been presented, and as misguided as it is, it's a natural consequence of a far larger problem. And that's that no one gives a damn. The kids are collateral damage in a war of accumulation, and the reason is there's no money in seeing public schools, school education succeed. So, certain parties, from Betsy DeVos to your predecessor, to our garbage mayor, scramble to take profit where they can. And I'm here to tell you, it won't work. Introducing the profit motive into education has been proven to fail, and I know we're going to have examples of people getting up and saying how charter schools are working for their kids and all that stuff, but you know what's working? A safe space and teachers who give a damn. That's what's working, not the fact that you introduce profit as a motive. And you know Rahm and his fucking yes aldermen don't even try to hide it, like Proko Joe, who opens 12 charter schools in his district, and I go to an LSC meeting, and the teachers are in tears because they can't pay for copies for the rest of the year. You know what? The lights don't get dimmed when you take the money out of the schools. Their fixed costs stay the same, and when Rahm proposes a budget with $15 million in loop tree planting and zero for public school, summer school, that tells you exactly where he stands.
Mr. Majid, thank you for your comments.
So, here's my message. We see through it, and we're coming for you.
As you leave, I neglected to make a comment I generally make at the start of these meetings, asking for courtesy and professional behavior. Your message, I'm sure, was compelling to you. Your language was not, and since this is viewed by the very people you're trying to protect, I think perhaps you want to think about how you say what you have to say. With that, let's proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, our next speaker will be Number Three, Maria Savala, followed by Speaker Number Four, Socorro Padilla, Speaker Number Five, Araceli Araquin, Speaker Number Six, Maisha Shields.
Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Maria Savala. Mi hija Valeria está en quinto grado en la escuela primaria Cisneros. Mi hija María es una recién graduada de la escuela secundaria Soto. Como madre, quiero lo mejor para mis hijos y agradezco tener una opción con respeto donde envío a mis hijos a la escuela. Creo que Cisneros es una escuela muy buena. Estoy satisfecha con la educación del director y los maestros. También me gusta que las escuelas Acero comenten y apoyen la participación de los padres. Soy voluntaria en Cisneros y estoy feliz de abogar en nombre de las escuelas Acero y sus estudiantes. Sé que los estudiantes de las escuelas charter públicas han estado profundamente financiados por años, y he viajado a Springfield en el pasado para reunirme con los legisladores para que hagan caso de hacer una financiación justa y equitativa. Me complace que finalmente se aprobó un proyecto de ley de financiación de la escuela y me emociona que incluya mejores en las formas en que se financian las escuelas autónomas. Es importante que CPS continúe apoyando a las escuelas que tienen un buen historial y estén logrando proporcionar a los estudiantes una educación de alta calidad. Mi esperanza es que con una financiación sostenible y equitativa todas nuestras escuelas y nuestros estudiantes tengan un éxtremo aún mayor.
My name is Maria Savala. My daughter Valeria is in fifth grade at Cisneros Elementary. My daughter María is a recent graduate from Soto High School. As a parent, I want what is best for my child, and I appreciate having a choice regarding where I send my children to school. I find Cisneros to be a very good school. I am pleased with the performance, and I find the principal and the teachers to be very dedicated. And also like that Acero Schools encourages and supports parent involvement. I volunteer at Cisneros, and I'm happy to advocate on behalf of Acero. I know that public charter school students have been deeply underfunded for years, and I have traveled to Springfield in the past to meet with legislators to make the case for a fair and equitable school funding. I am pleased that school funding bill was finally passed. I am excited that it includes improvements in the ways charter schools are funded. I appreciate the work that CPS has done to arrive to this budget, and I look forward to continue to work with the Board to ensure all students are funded fairly. It is important that CPS continue to support schools that have a good track record and are succeeding at providing students with a high-quality education. My hope is that with sustainable and equitable funding, all our schools and all our students will experience even greater success. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And our next speaker, please, Socorro Padilla.
Hi, my name is Socorro Padilla. My son is Lorenzo Padilla. He is in first grade at Zizumbo, which is part of Acero Schools' Veterans Memorial Campus. Zizumbo consistently ranks as a Level One school throughout your rankings, and so was Garcia and Torres, which is part of the same campus. I'm happy that we have this option in my neighborhood. My son has a speech delay, he has an IEP, and unfortunately, our homeschool, our home CPS school, was not able to accommodate his special needs. And ever since he started at Zizumbo last year, he has succeeded. He talks nonstop, and for the most part, you can understand him. And not only has the school been able to accommodate him, but they've also been able to support me as a mom dealing with, you know, a child who was not at the same level as everyone else. And I'm very grateful that we have this option, and I feel that more parents should have this option, because every child is different. Not every kid is the same. Not every kid will succeed at their homeschool, and we should be able to have other options that are great options where our children will succeed. And he's been a happier kid ever since then, and I try and give back to the school by volunteering as much as I can. This is my first time at something like this, so I'm a bit nervous, but I'm really appreciative of the progress that you guys have made to include us in this budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Padilla. And our next speaker, please, Araceli Araquin. Last call for Araceli. Moving on to the next speaker, Maisha Shields.
My name is Maisha Shields, and I am the proud mom to five amazing charter school scholars. One is at Massuato, where she is a sophomore. The other four, eighth, seventh, sixth, and fourth graders are students currently at Catalyst Maria Charter School. So, today I am here because charter schools have been deeply underfunded for years, but we are excited to learn that there is a budget and that CPS is taking a big step toward treating all public schools fairly. It is my hope that you continue to support our charter schools and that you can see the amazing work not only our teachers and our educators are doing, but also our scholars, because they are doing some amazing things within all of these charter schools. And I appreciate the work that CPS has done to get this budget, and I was right alongside with you with the fight for the SB 1947 to pass. So, I hope CPS continues to work with the charter sector, support our students, and do right by all of our CPS kids. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shields. And, Mr. President, if I may, we have Karen Lewis, who is in our audience, who wishes to address the Board.
Of course.
Ms. Lewis.
Thank you so much, Estella. Good morning. How are you? I come before you today to say that sadly this proposed new budget falls short in every possible way. It fails to serve our students, to support our dedicated workforce of educators, and it fails to provide our neighborhoods with sustainable community schools. Section 12.2 or page 56 of the agreement that we have come to work with is very clear about, let's get together and make these community schools possible with the money that's involved in them. What we're concerned about is that the way the funding is set up, the whole purpose of the way the state came up with an equity amount of money was based on evidence. It's called evidence-based model. We're still stuck in the student-based model, which means that students that often need the most still don't get what they deserve. Now, I disagree with the whole notion of the charter schools have been unfairly funded. They came before you years ago saying, "We can do this work for less money and do it better." That was their whole claim to fame. They said that out loud, and we were like, "Okay, fine, let's see you do it, and then share your best practices." And that's never been done, never been done. So, I have nothing against charter school teachers. I have nothing against charter school parents or students who choose that for their children. I have nothing against that. You know, I do have something against the charter management companies that make as much as you do, and you have, what, 600 schools under your purview? They might have 12 or 14, and they make as much money as for us. I have a problem with that, but I am concerned that there will be ongoing layoffs of teachers and support staff who really play critical roles in the lives of our students and the larger community. And with the bulk of those layoffs falling once again, and most harshly on the shoulders of black female educators, we have some serious problems. Our union will fight tooth and nail with our community allies to ensure that our students receive better, because they deserve it, and fairness and equity demands it. So, let's look at how we need to reevaluate. So, I understand you all are getting like $76 million in new money. Let's make sure it goes to where we said we want it to go, to the neighborhood schools, where people can walk their kids to school, where people can walk their kids to school, because we want to have people invest in those neighborhoods so that they have a place to send their children. Those things are extraordinarily important, and they're missing. You know, we still have about $400 million in cuts that we're going to see. We don't have a balanced budget. We don't have a balanced way. I mean, we're still looking at about $12,000 a kid that we're paying in debt. You know, so let's figure this out better, and I would like to ask you, Mr. Clark, to have some time to sit down so that we can actually start putting together some selection criteria for the community schools, because I've never reached out to you, and I'm sorry I haven't done that. So, I'm doing that publicly now so people know it's on the record, because they've asked me, "Have you reached out to Frank?" And I said, "No, I haven't," so I'm doing it now.
I reached out to you.
You have?
Well, it's been a little while ago.
Well, yeah, like when we were in 2013?
No.
Since then?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Well, we're going to see what I'm concerned about. The predominantly black and Latino schools will see much deeper cuts in their budgets. I'm worried about the special ed money, that we need to figure out how to do this equitably, not equally. Not everybody gets the same amount of money. That's not equitable. It's those who deserve, and I thought that was what the whole process, why Governor Rounier held us hostage for two and a half years, you know, and, you know, because we need to have some equity. And equity and equality are two different things, and I hope you all are taking that into consideration and not just say, "Okay, we'll go," you know, but let's figure out how that money gets spent.
Thank you very much, Karen.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Lewis.
Thank you, Ms. Beltran.
Our next speaker, Mr. President, will be Speaker Number Seven, please, Deborah Haas, followed by the last speaker, Speaker Eight, Chris Bayron.
Hi, my name's Deb Haas. I'm a CPS parent and a board member of Raise Your Hand. I'm here today because we have a lot of concerns about this revised budget. The revision to increase funding for charter schools is required by the state law you promoted that binds you to pay higher costs without a binding source of revenue to offset them. With legislators like Pritchard quoted in the press saying it will be nearly impossible for the state to make full payments to school districts, you're increasing the budget for charter schools. CPS is increasing the budget by $37 million this year alone, but giving nothing more to district schools without any analysis of real need at the school level. At the same time, schools across the district suffer from gross underfunding that you refuse to recognize and address. This budget does nothing to address the chronic underfunding and the years of baked-in cuts you've imposed. Where is the urgency to address the desperate need for an increase in per pupil funding for district schools? Only 25 of 167 CPSI schools have librarians. We lack sufficient counselors, nurses, special ed teachers, and aides. The Board fails to provide a high-quality education for all. Why isn't more money being spent on the students at Kelly High School, who lost 25 teachers and staff this year, or Ellington Elementary, a so-called welcoming school in Austin that lost 11 positions, or Courtney, another welcoming school that lost eight positions? The list goes on and on. In its amended budget, the City of Chicago will provide only $80 million of the original $269 million it committed in further local resources that they had promised us in the original budget. It's absurd that the only support for schools will come from the form of police services. The TIF surplus CPS receives in this budget is less than last year. You should be pushing for more, more for all of our students, and a more transparent process that puts this meeting on the CPS calendar and gives us a chance to talk to you from our neighborhoods at times when working parents can
Ms. Haas.
... and ask for support for their students.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And our last speaker, Mr. President, Chris Bayron.
Good afternoon. My name is Chris Bayron, and I'm president of Chicago Acts Local 4343, the Union of Charter Educators in Chicago. And I come to speak to you today to speak against this revised budget for two reasons. It will harm black and Latino students by targeting their schools for closure, and it continues a policy of expanding charters and closing district schools that benefits no one except for education, privatization, vultures, and all the other wealthy persons who want to avoid the reform that our schools and students deserve, which is more progressive revenue. The educators at charter schools will not be bribed with $37 million to be silent while unconscionable cuts to district classrooms, full of children, get left unremedied. Whether we work in a district or a charter school, we all care about. We care about all kids. This Board, I know you care about all kids, too, and it's time to act that way by providing the funding to the classrooms so that the young people can get the education that they deserve. Student-based budgeting has been CPS's method for disguising cuts and applying pressure on principals to favor novice teachers over veterans, which drains experience and diminishes the number of black and Latino teachers in our schools. By pursuing this policy, which pushes out educators of color, the Board is further entrenching systemic racism. Students deserve teachers that look like them, role models, professional role models. I'd also like to say that this policy of opening and closing schools is not a way of supporting schools, yet this fundamental structural deficit pretty much guarantees that CPS will move to close more schools this year. Every time a school is closed, this Board and the mayor who appointed you have failed the community. You need to support the schools. We need to stop opening and closing schools and support the schools that we have. Charter expansion is causing enrollment declines, budget cuts, and layoffs at our charter schools as well as district schools. The cost of expansion, that's money that charters are spending that should be spent in the classroom.
Thank you.
So, I'll just finish with this. It's time for this Board to stop making excuses and start demanding the progressive revenue without which the futures of our schools and our students are critically imperiled.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Mr. President, this concludes the public comment segment.
Okay. Board members, any questions or comments based on the presentations? Go ahead.
I'll make a comment. I would like to tell our audience that I really appreciate that the state funding resulted in some constraints, and I also like to tell you that I really appreciate management's efforts.[1794.26][1794.26][1794.26] efforts to serve all the stakeholders that we have in the city. I realize we face many challenges still, but I think we are going to come to those challenges with more strength than we have in the past two years, anyway. That's my comment.
Thank you very much. If there are no other comments, this concludes the amended budget hearing. Thank you.
I just want to give you a little more detail, but-
Okay.
Since I had a short period of time, I left a whole lot of facts in the papers out that I'd like to share with the board.
Thank you, President Lewis.
Thank you, President Clark.
This concludes the amended budget hearing. Thank you very much.